We'll start with our call to order here. Start time at seven o'clock. Roll call.
Keys?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Navarro?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Lopez-Caniva? Here. All right, we'll establish a pro temp position for our board secretary, Ms. Johnson. Would you like to accept?
Second.
Would you like to accept the pro temp position of Frau?
Sure.
Thank you.
Could be very brief.
There'll be.
Like two agenda items.
Yes. At this time, if we can all stand up for the pledge allegiance. And I'm going to ask our Japanese students to lead us on the pledge.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should have had you do it in Japanese, right? What does it test? All right, well, thank you. All right, do I, let's see, I am now next is we are going to do the school board member oath of office for Ms. Candace Garrettson, okay? And let's see, we're going to probably see.
And you have to vote first.
Oh, you have to vote first. Okay, thank you.
So you need a motion.
All right.
And then a vote.
All right, do I have a motion to approve Candace Garrettson to fill the unexpired term on the Board of Education of Dr. Sandra Shimon Rogers?
I move.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keys?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez-Caniva?
Yes. All right, if we're going to keep them in the office, all right. I guess I think we're going to go over here in front.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Right there. It was repeated after a penalty transcript. I?
I.
Candace Johnson, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties. That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education for Board of Directors of Lockport Township High School in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. Of the Office of Member of the Board of Education or Board of School Directors of Lockport Township High School in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear or affirm that I shall respect taxpayer's interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I further swear or affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall respect, oops, I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education or Board of School Directors as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in equitable and quality education of every student in the district. As part of the Board of Education or the Board of School Directors as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Lockport Township High School. I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Lockport Township High School. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community school or schools to advance the vision for Lockport Township High School. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community school or schools to advance the vision for Lockport Township High School. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community school or schools to advance the vision for Lockport Township High School. I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the area of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Oh, no, 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 not yet, you know, we got to do a little PR work. Mrs. Garrettson, any supporters of yours that are here?
My son Aiden.
Oh, Aiden, you got to come on up. That's just the way that it goes. That's how we do it here. That's how we get things done. Let Mrs. Adolf get in there.
Oh, no, let's do one together. All right. Thank you.
Okay, now, you want just the two of you? Yes, sure.
Of course.
First day of school birth. Thank you.
All right. Nice job. For the members of the public, unfortunately, we had one of our board members pass away on June 24th, Dr. Sandra Shimon Rogers. Very sad event, really strong board member. When that happens in the middle of an election period, the board accepts applications, had 12 applicants, all those 12 applicants slated eight to be interviewed. Of that eight, the board selected Mrs. Garrettson for this position. And that position, and that lasts until the next election, which is April 1st, 2025. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Luanne Johnson as Board Secretary?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Keys and second by Mr. Travis. Roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Keys?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez-Caniva?
Yes. All right. Motion passes. All right, do I? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
And again, Dr. Shimon Rogers was our board secretary, so Ms. Luanne Johnson was very gracious to accept the appointment. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Avery Colaella, Mia Fontanera, Michael Dirkies, and Wazira Chikanoni as student board members for the 2024-2025 school year?
Salute.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Keys. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Keys?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez-Caniva?
Yes. All right.
Right, now you get to do the oath. So take your oath with you.
All right, we're going to do this together. Okay, so we'll just, you don't have to wait for me to say it. We'll all do it. Okay, hi. Hi. Mia Fontanera. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge. That I will faithfully discharge. The duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education. The duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education. Of Lockport Township High School. Of Lockport Township High School. In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the state laws of the.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further swear or affirm that.
I further swear or affirm that.
I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education or Board of School Directors as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. As part of the Board of Education or Board of School Directors as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. As part of the Board of Education or Board of School Directors as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. As part of the Board of Education or Board of School Directors as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Lockport Township High School. I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Lockport Township High School. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our students in compliance with state law. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our students in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community school or schools to advance the vision for Lockport Township High School. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community school or schools to advance the vision for Lockport Township High School. I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Congratulations.
All right. And, you know, Mrs. Lopez, we have to find out, do you have any supporters here? So why don't we go from, we'll go Michael across, and we do want to get a picture of you and your supporters. Michael, any supporters here that you can introduce us?
Well, my parents, of course, right there.
Come on over, you know, we got to give the public relations people right on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, yeah.
We'll do a big photo.
Wazira, do you have any supporters here with you tonight?
I have my mom, my brother, and my sister, and my grandpa.
All right, come on down.
We're going to do a family photo real quick. Thanks, girl. Thank you. Okay?
Thank you. Feel free to stay. Mia, do you have any supporters with you?
I have my dad, my sister, and my best friends.
Yes. That best friend, public supporter.
Last, but not, Ms. Colala, any supporters with you?
I've got my parents and my boyfriend, Justin.
All right.
My parents and boyfriend, Justin. He's like, I'm out. Thank you. One big family photo.
Yeah, you know where this is going. And just for the public, as we're getting set up, similar to Mrs. Garrettson, all four of these individuals went through a very serious application process. You know, almost 30 applicants, the board interviewed about half of those, and Avery and Mia will be at the monthly board meeting, and Wazira will be on the finance and facility committee, Michael will be on the curriculum committee. Typically, at the first board meeting and the last board meeting for these, all are s- Wazira, you're a seater, right? Okay, I don't know why I suddenly had it. They'll, at the first board meeting and last board meeting, all four of them sit in if Michael and Wazira would like, and then we also do that in June. You join eventually your committees, you guys are here with us, with us every month. So I'm going to give these students a big round of applause for.
You know, to have Ms. Candace Garrettson, of course, our student board members here. Congratulations. All right, okay. Next, we have our resolutions and recognitions. We have a Skills USA student, Emily Doe. Is she here? Yes. Okay.
And we also have her teacher and sponsor, Jeff Brown. Emily, is this your family?
Yep.
All right. You know what's going to happen next.
All right, this is a resolution recognizing the accomplishment of Lockport Township High School student Emily Doe. Whereas Lockport Township High School Skills USA student Emily Doe was awarded the first place gold medal competing in the National Skills USA competition, and whereas Emily Doe competed in the National Skills USA competition on June 28th, 2024, in Atlanta, Georgia, and whereas Emily Doe is the two-time national medalist, last year earning the silver second place medal, and has brought honor and distinction to herself, her family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 19th day of August 2024. Congratulations, Emily.
And I'm pretty sure that Mr. Brown and your family knows what's next.
Yes, so come on up, everyone. It's time to take a good picture.
And I'm going to steal our union president's thunder, you know, she'll say it probably in her report, but you know, just for everybody here, you know, this evidence that none of these things, pretty amazing, Emily, that like, let that sink into everyone in the room, national champion.
Yes.
That, that's incredible, right? National champion. But none of these things happen without a, you know, supportive family and a really skilled teacher. So Mrs. Kishline says that all the time, and it's very meaningful.
Awesome, thank you.
All right.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
Salute.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Keys and second by Dr. Shaw. Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck in school, Emily.
Yes.
Emily, where are you, Emily, where are you headed to college?
UIC.
Okay, good luck. You're leaving this week?
I leave Wednesday, actually, Wednesday morning.
Okay, yeah.
So just in time for this meeting.
Yes.
Congratulations.
So we are sending you good luck, Emily. It's awesome.
Congratulations. All right, thank you. Okay. I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Well, why don't we do, we have one more resolution, you know, new agenda item, board salutes.
Yes, we do.
Encourage you to have the board seeing, you know, any interesting, good things. You know, you want to shout out the past month.
I do, first of all, I, I attended the Lockport Athletic Coaches Legends, which was held last month at Misswood. And I salute to our athletic director, Mike Dwyer, and his committee, you know, for organizing such a great event. It was, it was phenomenal. I mean, we had so many coaches attend there. You know, even past players attended, and each of them spoke, you know, before getting an award, but it was very inspirational. They spoke of, you know, especially the players, you know, that, that attended here. They were very, they spoke very highly of their teachers. And they spoke very highly of the coaches, and they even said, "I would not be where I am today without them." So that really brought, really, it was very emotional. And then even the coaches, when they spoke, you know, they said that they had the support of not only of their, you know, fellow coworkers, but they also had the support of their players. They said, you know, even when I was let down or anything, the players said, you know, just, they would just almost inspire them to do that. And, I mean, it was almost like, even my niece attended, and she had just graduated from, you know, from high school. And she attended, and I thought, oh my gosh, she's probably gonna be bored because there's all these older people there, and she's probably gonna be one of the youngest. But she even got up and she said, "Just hearing those speeches, it inspired me." And I was, she said, "I'm so glad to be a porter." Every one of those people that spoke, they all said, "I'm so glad to be a porter." And they, even though they moved far away, they still feel like they were a porter. So it was, it was a great event. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I would like to salute Bill Thompson. His staff and the administration for having a successful first-day school. And especially getting Central up and going.
I think Mr. Thies had one, too.
Well, I, I'm gonna echo yours. I was gonna salute Dr. McBride and his team, Dr. Green and her team, Dr. Johnson and her team, Mr. Thompson and his team, and all of our central faculty and staff for the absolute yeoman's effort to get Central. Not only started construction three-ish months ago, but completed with construction before students walked in the front door. It's honestly just an amazing amount of work. And obviously, the contractors are, are primarily responsible for a lot of actually doing the work. But our, our team just stepped up both last November, but also probably even more importantly for this year, over the last three months. And it's just, just astounding what, what all the teams have done to get everybody ready.
Um, I got, I have a different one. Dr. Greenan, for what he did to welcome our new teachers to the building. I've heard wonderful things about, about the programming that he had just to, you know, get them in here. A lot of people don't understand what exactly it takes to hit a school up and running for the year, so. And part of that is new teacher induction.
All right. Me or Candace, do you want?
As you guys wish, you know.
Ladies first.
You know what I mean, you're not required.
I did participate or attend the event for the reopening on Friday, so I just wanna echo everything that's already been said. It was, I thought it was a really nice event, and just seeing, having walked through the school during the construction and even before the construction actually started, to what it looked like on Friday, was just phenomenal. So congratulations to everybody for doing that. And then also, I attended first day at Central today. And it was just really nice to see all the teachers. They all had smiles on their faces, they were all excited. I was at door fifteen, they had some music going, and you know, a little dancing, and seeing all the students come off the bus. And most of them had smiles on their faces, a little bit of being a little nervous. But the staff did a really nice job of bringing them along. And it was nice to see some of those students who needed some extra help, that staff was able to respond and, and get them on their way. So it was just a really nice first day.
Well, I guess it's my turn. So I think something that I would like to salute is just how far we've come as a board and as a community. It seems that we have just a greater reach of people who are willing to be involved in our community. We picked up Candace from the Citizen Advisory Board, we now have our student board members. It just seems that more and more people, ever since I've started my term as board, has just gotten to be more involved with the school. They've been able to just come in and talk to us. And there, it's, you know, even before I heard from Ann that, you know, there'd only be two or three people in the board, but now look, we have like a full house when it comes to some of these board meetings. More people are speaking, more people are getting commu-, you know, it just feels warmer, especially what, seeing the teachers. When I first attended my teacher institute, it seemed like some, some people were really just talking pleasantries. But as I got more and more involved with the teachers institute, sometimes just, you know, like walking around, you hear people actually talking about, you know, like, "How's your kid?", you know, "How's that engagement?" And you, it seems like it's a more, like, people care more about each other. And I think that that's, that shows how far we've come as a board, being able to foster those connections.
Michael?
Of course, I'm gonna echo off of what everybody said. Dr. McBride, your team, administrator, everybody's been doing a fantastic job. I didn't get a chance to go and visit Central, a little bit under the weather. But the first day I went, when everything took place from the ceiling falling in, got to see how everything, how they took everything apart and took it down, and look at us now. Just wanna say, great job, team. Everybody did a fantastic job, and to all the board members, great job hanging in there, going through a lot of rough times that we went through. So I know we got a good team here.
I do want to.
Sure.
Ms. Kathy Maxwell, for keeping us all organized from May until now. I don't think we could do without her.
That's true.
I appreciate your text messages, thank you.
Thank you.
Especially me, thank you.
You got fancy folder and everything.
Yes, yes.
I wanted to salute the security office from the welcome back days. I know as a senior getting my parking permit, they had a really nice structure with all the documents and signatures and everything. I really appreciated being able to go in there, it was a really smooth process. And I know it was hard work for them, I know they had some frustrations with people not even having the right things. So I just wanted to salute them, they did a really nice stop with that.
Um, and I, everyone said everything about Central, and I'm gonna echo that as well. I got the opportunity to go there on Tuesday before it was all done, because I was setting up all the scanners and the viewboards. And just to see everyone working so hard to get this up and running by Friday. And then to walk in the building and it be like beautiful again on Friday, without all the boxes that were there Tuesday, it was just like, wow. So I just really wanna salute all of them, everyone who put in the effort that week, that final week, just like really working hard to get everything out of there and all set for students.
All right. All right. Moving on then to our reports, the Yamatai Exchange Report.
All right, Button Sensei, you know, your, your team is coming up, so I'll get the slides up and, you know, we'll do this thing. You know, Wazira and Michael, if you wanna kinda slide over, maybe make a little, make a little room over there, you know. Oh, and, and Wazira and Michael, you can lead your things there, maybe just slide your chairs over, you know. And yes, if you are here supporting someone, feel free, no, no pressure to stay. We're going to be talking about the budget, it's fascinating. See you guys. And we have to preface this by saying, part of this exchange, I feel like we're back in our groove. Button Sensei and her willing assistant, Dr. McBride. And I'm gonna preface this, just get this out of the way, when I would tell the board, I'd tell the public. You know, I learned a lot of things, you know, returning to Japan, I had a professional experience earlier, so familiar with the country. But you know, sixteen days with Button Sensei, and I would tell you honestly, you know, two things, two important things. Number one, I think we, we have a treasure in Carla Button, in terms of. The Japanese self in Japan was a thing, really a thing to behold, really. Most frequent question that she would get is perplexed Japanese people would say to her, "Why, why is your Japanese so good?" And that's the highest compliment you can get in Japan. Then I would also say, just as we get into this thing, you know, the board, you made a decision, started proving two trips abroad. We had a basis of comparison. The Yamatai School has four Canadian partners, five United States partners. And without sort of bragging on the thing, I would definitely say some of the students that you'll hear from, just far more mature, confident, ready for Japanese culture. You, you could just really feel the difference in, in their sophistication, right? And that, that was really noticed by both of us, as, you know, there were about a hundred and thirty students, about maybe twenty-five, thirty chaperones, and we just really, really noticed that. So onward, I am at your disposal, Button Sensei, you tell me when you advance.
Yes, I believe you're my co-presenter since.
Yeah, well, yeah, I will be right in it as well, so.
So I do want to just kinda share very briefly, show you some photos and so forth, but I think the most important part is hearing from the participants and from the parents. So if you could please, to the next slide. So on April, so our journey began back on April twenty-first through the twenty-sixth. Ooh, wait, that date looks wrong, that's too short. The LTHs, it was two weeks.
Yeah, don't worry, it was the fourteenth.
Yeah, sorry about that. Our LTHs families, we hosted thirty-one students from Yamatai Gakuen, and it was an incredible experience when we saw the Japanese students coming off the bus, coming into the cafeteria, and just to the last day, when the students were loading back on the bus, and just seeing the tears in my students' eyes, and the tears in the students' eyes of the Yamatai not wanting to leave each other. It was incredible, so if we could go ahead to the next one.
I, yes, we had, so they had a lot of wonderful different opportunities, they went to prom, okay. We had potluck dinner, they went to the Sears Tower, they went to Navy Pier. They had a lot of different experiences, but I think the best experience was the time that they spent with our students in our classrooms and with the families. That was the most important. So yes, you can see, this is some of our, our potluck dinners. Thanks to Dance for helping with the decorations. So let's go ahead to the next one. So you can see some, some students even made it to the Wrigley Field Board right there. So the sign, you probably can't read it, but it says, "We came all the way from Yokohama, Japan to see the Cubs game." And so they went on the Jumbotron, and they put on a wonderful cultural event for us. And I did have several people come and participate, and it just seemed like everybody really had a wonderful time. Okay, next one. Now for our reverse, where we went to Japan. We also, as a group, with the other students from the Canadian schools and the other schools in the US, we traveled together to different places, like Hakone Shrine, Owakudani, where you can have these eggs that are, they're like really black, but they're supposed to be very good in heat.
They were delicious.
Right. Tokyo Disney Sea and the Sakusas, so we did do sightseeing, but I believe the kids are going to be able to tell you from their own perspective, the best part was the families. If we could go ahead. So I have the dates correct here, sorry about that last one. July twentieth through August third, so fifteen students, I have about half of them here, if not over half, stayed with those families in Yokohama, if you're not sure where Yokohama is, it's very close to Tokyo. So they were able to visit Tokyo as well. You're gonna notice, we are dressed in beautiful yukata, summer yukata. The parent organization made sure that every student went home with a yukata. So all of the kids received, they went home with these yukatas. Thank you. All right, so again, this is just to kinda show you. Yes, that explanation will probably be worse than this, but you can see the kids have a lot of different cultural activities too over there. So for example, Kyle here learned how to play the koto. Again, embraced the Japanese don quihote megastore, so that's where these pictures are coming from. But it was really wonderful. If we could go to the next one. So now here comes the most important part of my presentation, not me talking, but my students. So first, if my students would please come forward.
Come on down.
And if you could next, please.
Yeah, you bet.
Yay, my students. So we have some photos here, but not to put them, because there are several, I told them I don't want to check under any pressure, but I did ask them to complete a survey for me, and one of the questions was, "How did this experience help you in your own personal growth?" So if any of you would like to, go ahead and share your experience, I know it's, so go ahead, Joe.
So my name's Joe Redman, I'm a senior at Lockport. I want to, I intend to major in Japanese and secondary education, so I want to continue on with my Japanese studies past high school. And one of the biggest worries that I had before the trip was if that's something that I really wanted to do. And I thought I wanted to do it for the last about two years. And going on that trip and living with my host family and meeting these people that, even today, I'm, I was talking to friends that I made in Japan today. And when I, that whole two weeks, and it was just two weeks. When I got back, I realized that like, that is what I wanna do. And I wasn't, hadn't been that happy ever. So it was a life-changing experience for me personally. And I think that even people that may not be in my situation, who wanna pursue Japanese, still would benefit from just the experience of seeing a different culture from the perspective of not just a tourist, but also living in the country with people that know their way around. That was probably the most important thing to me, was that, that connection that I made with all the friends and families that I had.
Anybody else?
I'll go next. I'm Elijah Carrigan, I lived with this guy in the exchange, it was, it was fun. That exchange itself, you know, going to Japan, really confirmed all the hard work I put into learning the language here and out of school. And it allowed me to really experience the culture and engage with the host family, and I still talk to my host mom today. She actually gave me a few recipes that she makes, because they're really good. But yeah, like, the whole experience was really confirming to me to how I love learning the language and how she has set me on that journey of learning Japanese. And then I took that to myself and learned more, and the more I got to use it there, I just, it was a repeating cycle, it was amazing. And just like he said, a life-changing experience, I think, personally.
No pressures, no pressures.
Hi, I'm Ava Capobello, and this was my host family. I just think everybody was so welcoming, like, so I hosted Yumino, and this is her, and I assume her and her family, and everybody, like, just right away, it was so warm and welcoming. And they gave us a room.
I really hope they would.
I'm Evelyn Pastrick. I stayed with one of my host students, with Jess, and it was just an incredible experience that changed my life, without a doubt. I mean, you get to the airport, you say bye to your families, you get on the airplane, you sit there for eleven hours thinking, "Oh, my gosh, this is really happening." And then you land in Japan, you're still in the airport, it's just crazy, and you get out, and you meet your host family, you're like, "Oh, my gosh, it's been so long since I've seen you, how have you been?" You know, I was so excited to see them again. And then we get outside, and it's so hot. It's so hot. And it's so humid. We get in the car, and we leave the airport, and we leave the parking lot, and you see the day again, and you're like, "Wow, I'm in Japan." And it's crazy, and the landscape is just beautiful. I mean, there's no word to describe how breathtaking the mountains in the distance are, and you just, you're like, "Oh, look at that beautiful mountain, look at that beautiful mountain behind it," and it just keeps going. And then the trees and everything, and I'm just, all of the geography was just so beautiful to me, and their culture, their food, and every part of it was just so meaningful to me. I realized that that was really where I wanted to be, and I want to move there one day, because that is, that is my dream place to be.
Don't worry, no pressures. All set? Okay. All right, well, thank you guys. So as I said, this is into all the students here, so we can go ahead and see again, how has this exchange contributed to your personal growth? Go ahead, and you may go ahead and read that. These were other students that aren't in attendance here, and what they have written. So I'll give you guys a moment. Okay, all right. Thank you. Now, on to the next. So, you know, of course, words can't express how grateful I am to the parents. So I have two parents here with me, Mrs. Heather Dance and Mrs. Katie Tilasky. Please come forward. So I'm just asking them to go ahead and just give a brief little view of how it was hosting. So on your end, they were both wonderful host families.
Hi, I'm Heather Dance. I hosted two students from Japan, and it was probably one of the most amazing experiences. I'll kind of take a different approach with this. These kids are so excited to see everything that our city has to offer. Not just our city, just, you know, I took them right here to Stagecoach in Lockport, and the little, the lady came out and surprised them, and they loved the car wash. I will never go, I will never go to gas wash again without thinking of these kids. They were just like, "This is amazing." And I'm like, they were so excited, I will have that memory forever. Like, we also did top golf. They didn't have a lot of experience doing certain things that we take for granted, just going bowling and top golf and all these things. We got to do all these things with these kids, and they were just so grateful, and I'm just so grateful to get to see the joy, you know? And Taco Tuesday, I got to watch these children take their first bite of salsa. It was fantastic, the tiniest little dip, and then they realized how amazing it was, and then they're just shoveling it in, like, you know, two teenage boys. So I highly suggest, you know, doing it if you have an opportunity. I am so grateful for the opportunity. Thank you so much for Sensei and Dr. McBride for putting this together and the board approving this program. It's fantastic. And my son hit a blast in Japan, so.
Hi, I'm Katie Tilasky. My daughter Jess is just started her junior year today, so we hosted two female students from Japan. I first talked about Button Sensei about this, Jess's freshman year at parent-teacher conferences, and I was like, "All in, we're doing this." So we are waiting for like a year and a half to do this. I have six kids. At the time, we hosted age three to age seventeen. My son was a senior, he just graduated Lockport. Jess and I were super pumped about this. The other kids, not so sure. They had to share rooms, they had to give up their bathroom for the girls, and, I mean, it was awesome, right? Built empathy for the kids. I'm like, "Listen, these girls are walking in here from Japan, they don't even really speak our language. They're thousands of miles away from home." So it really, you know, we took a step back to watch these girls walk in, and when they walked in, I said, "Oh, you can put your shoes over there," and they were, I had no idea what I was saying, right? I mean, so the language was a struggle, more than I think we realized it was going to be when they came. I don't know why, I just thought in my mind, like, everyone speaks English, right? So I was kind of surprised that their English was actually pretty poor, especially what we did a lot on the Translate app. But yeah, the experiences we did, you know, we went downtown and did all the touristy stuff, but, you know, Button Sensei, it's not some of the most meaningful or just gonna be stuff at home, which I think the most giggles and laughter I heard out of the kids was one night they were in the basement doing karaoke, just like my kids and the girls. And that was like one of the funnest, and Jess, my daughter, said when she was in Japan, one of the funnest nights they had was a night doing games at home with family, and with family friends that came over. So, I mean, that was awesome. And to watch these kids from Japan come here, and our kids go there at their ages, to take this on, the courage of these kids, these kids can do anything. I would never have had the courage at age fifteen, or, you know, however old all of them are, to do this, to go to another country without your parents. I mean, and some of them write their friends in school, but it's not even like their best friend went with them, right? It's Button Sensei, Dr. McBride, and their classmates to take that on. Awesome. Trying to convince my daughter to take Japanese, because Button Sensei is awesome, the program is amazing, this exchange program, amazing, great experience. I would love to host again, even if Jess can't go back to Japan, hit us up, I would do it again in a heartbeat. It was so fun, awesome. And yeah, just hats off, you know, to Button Sensei, to Dr. McBride, to the board for, again, approving this, and just, in general, all the teachers at Lockport. My son just graduated, and I've met so many teachers and parent-teacher conferences, and, you know, meetings, emails, Dr. McBride, and, I mean, top flight. The whole district is just top flight, everybody, all the teachers are just awesome and supportive, and it's just, it's been a great experience. I've got four more kids coming up to go through, so I know it'll continue, but yeah, our first experience at Lockport, and yeah, it's just been awesome across the board, so. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for sharing those pictures, and thank you for sharing those memories, because I know that they will carry those memories for a lifetime.
Similar to what I did with the students' survey, so the host families, I have some comments, just a couple for you to go ahead and read for the host families that are now present. And then, yes.
Do you have a chance to read something? Do you have a chance to read something? All right, I slipped this slide in. You know, just also, I think it's really important, I mean, you know, my mission ongoing was to support Carla, just like Matt Dostrop supported Mrs. Quintinar in the Dominican Republic, just having some knowledge, being able to, you know, a stage in my life to devote the time. But I also would really stress to the board, you know, and come back to you and report, I'm actually working with a superintendent in California, who Yamate would like, in the Sacramento area, would like to do what we're doing, but their board and their superintendent are just very nervous, right? And I can't tell you the firsthand professional experience of having gone on the exchange to come back to you, you know, to certify its quality, its importance, the experience that students had, the safety, the protocols that Yamate has in place to make it safe and sound just very sophisticated. Probably this is my fourth type of exchange like this in my career, and just clearly the most experienced and the most sophisticated. Just at every corner, they thought of something, all the way down to, they're the only exchange program I've been in, that requires that two students are in each home. Then of itself is just thinking about emotional security, physical safety, right? Giving Carla a cellphone to use in Japan, so absolutely no communication problems. But just a few things, I just want to use these pictures to illustrate professionally, Carla and myself. Obviously, for Carla and her profession, growing, extending, I think one of the gifts that she has is making partnerships. Yamate emailed us, and we said yes, right? But additionally, while we were there, we went to a whole other school down in the lower-hand corner, the Yokohama Commercial School, and Carla's established a partnership through global classmates with that school as well, so that all this year, there will be weekly correspondence between our students and students at Yokohama Commercial. The gentleman that you're seeing kind of in the picture at the Hakone Shrine with us, Hiroki Nagano, is our contact. And just being able to really get to know Hiroki, just, he's a fascinating person in general, but just as a colleague, a teacher, to talk about education, to connect. For me, I think probably for both of us, so important, I think, to connect with students outside the formal environment that we have in school. School has lots of structures, you know, but to learn everything, a desk is a fashion maven, she wore one of her outfits today, so proud. You know, to each one of these students and how they distinguish themselves in terms of interacting with their world and gaining confidence in interacting with the world. And then actually, you know, we are kind of concerned, and I know you are as board, with Mrs. Button's apparent addiction to green tea ice cream. It's a concern, you know, she's scooped up on antioxidants and sugar, you know, before noon sometimes, okay? But pretty neat, we went out with Mary Rasmussen, who's a North Central student, and was wrapping up her study abroad that she started in February, so it's nice. So it's fun to find a porter in, you know, totally different country and to go out. So professionally, I think we grew, both, you know, learned so much, just for us, right? So I just threw that slide in. Questions? Anything that you can answer for the board?
Very serious question.
Yes.
How many of the students, when they were here, had Chicago-style hot dogs?
All of them. All of them, they was at our potluck event.
Yes, yes.
I was gonna say, did any, any of them relish, or the sport peppers?
Yes. And Mr. Teaser was, that was not an event without controversy. There was a very fine Chicago-style hot dog bar, which was similar feet, yeah? Somehow someone put a bottle of ketchup. It sparked fisticuffs and outrage, but we'll just let it slide. But they don't make.
They had pizza, they loved hot dogs and pizza.
Yes, they did that, too.
Yes.
The deep dish?
Yes.
So how they enjoy the cubs?
I wasn't at it, but I'm assuming they really enjoyed it.
Baseball is apparently a really big sport in Japan. It's one of the, it's their, I think, most popular sport, right, Sensei?
I think it is one of the most popular.
So the current star of Chicago Cubs, who showed Cubs have two Japanese players, but the current star, new pitcher, is very good, was traded from the Yokohama Bay Stars. And the Yamate School took the adult chaperones to a Bay Stars game, which, there's no adequate description for what happened at that point. We had cheerleaders, we had chanting, we had singing, we had, it was an event, you know, but serious baseball, too. But, you know, very popular because he was a Yokohama Bay Star, so hometown person, so for them to see him pretty.
So if the students stayed in a host family, oh, what did you guys stay?
We stayed in a very nice hotel. The Yamate School paid for us to stay in the Yokohama New Grand Hotel, right on Yokohama Bay. And that was, we had a whole entire floor, all the chaperones. So it was very nice, very comfortable, great location, easy for us to get to school because public transportation in the Tokyo-Yokohama area is just so first-rate.
How many chaperones did you have?
We had two, which we think was probably the right size for fifteen. Some of the other schools did this longer or bigger, you know, twenty, pushing twenty-five, thirty, had teams of like four or five chaperones.
I just looked it up. In the 2020 Olympics, Japan actually defeated the United States in the gold competition, so they are about as good as I could say.
Very good.
For baseball?
For baseball, yeah, they defeated, they actually beat the American team, I guess, two to zero, so.
Yeah, no doubt, baseball is super serious. Oh, yeah.
What was something that you loved about the trip that you didn't expect to love during the trip?
Me? Yeah. That I didn't expect? That's an excellent question. Oh, boy, what do you have announced? He has my answer?
Well, I just thought maybe I would put it in from a student's perspective as well. I, one of the biggest questions that friends and family have asked me was, what was the biggest culture shock I had? And the answer that I gave them is, everything that I learned in school, I knew about, and I wasn't shocked to see it, that it was, the best experience was actually experiencing those things. Like, learning about the public transportation that Dr. McBride talked about, on paper, it's like, "Oh, it's a train, it's really cool." And then you go there, and you're sitting on a train, and you're like, "Wow, I don't ever want to ride the L again." So you're there, and that is, you know about it, and you knew about it going into it, but experiencing it is probably the best thing that I'd say that anybody could experience. And that's coming from a student's perspective. I don't know what Miss Button has to say.
I think just from my perspective, because I've been to Japan a couple times. Well, more than. It's just how well-run that program was. It was mind-blowing, it was wonderful, very well-organized.
It just wasn't a thing that the Yamate School, you know, fifty years of experience doing, and, and for the elected board members, you have something at your table. And what this is, is we were at a Buddhist temple, Sakusa, there's a Buddhist temple there, and, you know, part of the temple, I'm on the side that regards Buddhism, more of a philosophy than a religion, about balance, about thought, about the forces of good and evil, the best in us and the worst in us. And they, also the monks sell charms. For the students, there's actually a charm for good luck in your exams, right? There's also a charm for safe driving. I bought you all the same charm, so if you take it out, that's it, it's not chocolate, there's nothing else in there. Put the charm in a place of importance, you might hang it, but this is ward off evil. So evil get behind you, all right? So ward off evil charm for you guys, so. So thanks so much, Carla, thanks you guys for coming out, you know.
Can I give my student a quick test?
Oh, absolutely, of course.
They learned, there was one expression, and I know, I know a parent here knows the answer. Can you guys tell me, what does this read? And what does Ichigo IGA mean? Yes, so this is what I wanted them to embrace, it's one time, one meeting, so you will never have the opportunity to repeat this moment in time, so you need to embrace it. So therefore, I'm gonna embrace the Ichigo IGA, and I'm going to thank you, administration and school board. As a student personally from nineteen eighty-four that was inspired by this school, I want to thank you so much for inspiring our students by offering these wonderful programs. So thank you very much.
And also, we say to the hard-working Button Sensei, parents, and students, we always say, "You do not have to stay." All right? So if you leave, you bid us adieu, not gonna hurt our feelings. You guys did a great job, so great traveling with you. You guys did a great job. So great traveling with you.
Can I?
Sayonara. They were a great group. That was a great group of students, let me tell you.
All right, Miss Adoff.
Well, I feel like my report was already given tonight, but I think it can be said again. I just wanted to thank Administration and Dr. Greenan for allowing the union to talk to our new teachers this past week. It was great to get in front of them, meet them, and let them know the great partnership that we have going here, which is not common in every school, and I think when some of them heard it, you know, it brought smiles to their face. I am happy to report too that we still maintain 100% of our certified staff in the union. So that is something to brag about. All of our teachers were so excited to be back home today. My phone was quiet, so that is good. So, but none of that would have happened without our support staff, our maintenance, who have literally run this place this summer and given everything. So thank you to Bill Thompson, Bill Howard, everybody. So, thank you.
Report, Miss Adoff.
Hi, good evening. I've been taking the wrong time all day. Just wanted to highlight some of the best things that we've been working on. One that I'm particularly proud of is we have a brand-new scholarship. The foundation was given $50,000 to create a scholarship for students going into trades or junior college specifically. Met with that family today. They are gonna allow us to kind of share their story with everyone else, because I feel like that's one of those things that deserves to be shared. He's a fond graduate of 1957 of Lockport Township High School. They moved to Arizona and came back to retire. Because everyone comes back here, right? That's what I said, I'm like, they just missed the cold.
Mild winter.
Yeah. So, and they actually said, like, they, I said, do you guys go somewhere for the winter? Like, well, we've missed too many, we want to stay. I'm like, all right. So I'm really excited about that. They, that just kind of speaks volumes about what the school means to people. And they're just a wonderful couple that are hoping to make a difference in perpetuity with this donation, and learned today that they're hoping to add to it every year, kind of moving forward. So it's really nice. Another thing that I didn't put in my report that I'm always excited to do is we give away the Maroon Apple Awards. We changed that just a little bit this year to put the second semester award at the beginning of this school year, just so that we kind of like spread the love when it comes to awarding things to our staff. One award that we gave away was kind of a special recognition award, and she's gonna love that I'm doing this right now. But she didn't get to be there for her award, so I thought I would take this opportunity to read a special nomination. The awards really are for staff members, for building staff. Our district office people don't belong to Central nor East, they're kind of, they belong to everybody. So one of our district office administrators got a nomination, and she was unable to accept her award at, she was moving her daughter into school, so I thought I'd read it right now. So she gets to hear it. I hung up on her when I tried to read it to her before. So fun. So this is what someone had said about her. I'd like to nominate Stephanie Kroy for the Maroon Apple. Stephanie has done so much this year for our district. First, the amount of time and dedication she has given to the seed program is admirable and shows her continued work at building our district to drive personal, organizational, and societal change towards greater equity and diversity. Along with this, what many people might not see on a daily basis is her extreme professionalism at providing honest and well-explained financial issues to the board every month. She works extremely long hours, making sure all payroll is on time and accurate. Some may say, yes, this is her job she was hired to do. However, it needs to be mentioned that no matter what curveball she has thrown, a ceiling crashing, moving an entire school in a week, adding an extra day to the calendar, negotiating a contract, interviewing new staff, she keeps a smile on her face and a calm attitude and a positive outlook towards it all. She deserves a standing ovation for her dedication to this district and needs to know that we recognize and thank her for her remarkable work ethic. So I thought I'd take the opportunity to present her with her award in front of you.
And I have to be Jeanette Castillo, because you can't be Jeanette Castillo right now. Come on, here we go. This is how we do it. Mrs. Castillo is ill, so she could not make it tonight. You're gonna have a bad.
So, okay, I'm gonna sit. Any questions? Thank you. Well deserved. And I think that Miss Adoff also had some dates there that are coming up.
Oh, I didn't even go through the rest of it.
Yeah, we can animate it, though. Here we go.
Yes.
I'll put up for the board just some dates. Taste of Lockport is coming September 21st. City of Lockport, what a great partner. Fun-filled evening, having a little kids' area this year too. It's a good talk, and all-ages kind of thing, and really great. Do you want to advertise just on Angela's behalf? Young Hearts for Life. You know, any board member here could volunteer, get the training. We need about 400 volunteers. We have people come out, a lot of the health professions. But, you know, literally you're saving, you know, kids' lives. This program that's been around for 25 years. As a brother who's in Children's Hospital Philadelphia, in Children's Cardio-Pulmonary Health, you know, he 100% stand behind this, is basically screening to avoid sudden cardiac arrest that can accompany growing adolescents and their heart not catching up. And it can lead to sudden cardiac arrest, which can be fatal. And so last year, last time we did this, two years ago, we had 10 students that we found out of about 2,800 who participated in it, who needed some pretty immediate attention. So even if you just had one student, I would say it'd be worth it.
Thank you. All right, next we have, let's see, the ISB report, I'm sorry, I must have skipped you, Ms. Lyman Johnson.
Well, I know there's not anything going on.
Not much going on, other than a long oath of office stuff. ISB is just kind of getting itself wound up. Should jump to the legislative report? Yeah, not much going on in that front either. The legislature is adjourned for the summer, so not, not much really happening there. I would say there is federal legislation that is fairly significant. And many times people recognize Title IX. When they hear that, they think of the gender equity in athletics. You know, Title IX is really what brought us, you know, the parity for women's athletic programs at the high school, middle school, college level, really wherever, you know, anyone who accepts federal funds as athletic programs. Since 2020, and even more recently, Title IX sexual harassment has become a very, very serious thing. Dr. Greenan did very clear presentations required for all staff members. Title IX sexual harassment, either inappropriate sexual conduct between adults, between an adult and a student, between students, have become a very, very serious thing under federal law, and we do accept federal funds. Many of you might be familiar with the responsibility that we have and board members have to be mandated reporters for the Department of Children and Family Services. If we suspect abuse and neglect, we have to report it. And Title IX sexual harassment has become the same. Any time that we see, hear, witness, hear about, encounter, we're required to report that and then investigate. The thoroughness of this, to kind of give the board an idea, probably if I asked you the two top things we worked on last year in terms of time, and I don't know if my colleagues would agree with me, I would say would be Central and everything in detail, and then Title IX sexual harassment investigations, primarily, well exclusively, of students to students. You know, and we're probably also in a place where we need to help our students understand the interactions that they need to have as preparation for life, from workplace to college place. I can tell you, as someone who teaches at the collegiate level, very serious, right? We have to include Title IX sexual harassment in our syllabus. The first day of class, I'll start teaching Wednesday night. I have to go over it in my class with all of my students. So in the college scene, it's extremely serious. Just want to share with you, those new regulations are in place as of August 1st, 2024, and we are, we're living them full-frothedly.
Thank you. All right, we have no public comment follow-up. Okay. Public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board, and there are none. Okay. Moving on to notices and communication, we have no communications. Freedom of information requests, we had two of them that are in your board packet. Okay, I'm gonna probably combine these two, the approval of regular minutes and the approval of the closed session meeting minutes. All right, do I have motion to approve the minutes and the closed session meeting minutes of the July 15, 2024 board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Sean, second by Mr. Tees. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
I think I was on the phone, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Tees?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Uste?
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. All right, I'll combine also these two. I'm doing, we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the July 29, 2024 special board meeting and the closed session meeting minutes of July 29, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Sean, second by Mr. Tees. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Uste?
Johnson?
Yes.
Tees?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. All right, board expenses, we have none. Okay, moving on to our treasures report, we have Miss Stephanie Kroy.
And as Mrs. Kroy comes up, we also have, inside this, and board members might want to reach in your folder, are the board member questions that were asked today about the budget. Inside of Mrs. Kroy's treasure report is also the tentative budget. And just right in the board, the kind of directory here, we presented the tentative budget in July. Were required by law to approve it in September, which would be a mid-September meeting. So typically, this is the meeting where we really try to tee up questions, or Mrs. Kroy and I will take back any board member suggestions, changes to the tentative budget. There are a few things I'll put out there, we'll put out there for discussion tonight. So we kind of located discussion about the budget. I'd invite the students, if there's questions that you have, you know, about budgeting, you know, feel free to ask them, so. Mrs. Kroy.
So the, you'll see the format of the finance. The treasures report format is similar this month, but if you click on the financial reports, you're gonna see some things have changed. And you'll see that there's a few more reports in there. What David Pryor, the Assistant Physical Manager, and I are trying to do is we're trying to make some of these reports a little bit more, I guess, like informational, I guess, right? Provide more information to the board. We're hoping to maybe add some more visuals in the future too, but only so much time in the day. So we made some changes this far. And in that respect, this month, the primary things we've changed is the order of these statements. That's one of the first things that we changed. And we were thinking of it from the perspective of other financial statements, right? So in the accounting profession, the first thing you would see is a balance sheet. So the statement position would be the equivalent of our balance sheet for a school district. So that's why we put that to the front, okay? And then we did a little bit of a rearranging on the asset section to kind of group some of our cash in bank. Because then the treasures report now reflects all of the cash accounts together that are grouped together under that cash in bank section, okay? It gives a clearer picture of the total cash in bank accounts as opposed to the way it was before. It was our primary bank accounts, but not necessarily all of them, right?
So it's more a granular breakdown. The very first portion is more granular breakdown of fund balances. Because typically, we would report that to the board, you know, most nominally with the graph, with a bar graph, almost like a sort of a whole number, right? And with Mrs. Kroy, it's not with Mr. Pryor's, it's really broken down. Okay, what are all these different, these different components that go into, where is this fund balance? What funds are these balances in? Just so the public and then the board can also see where all of, I like the expression, cash in bank.
Right, so, and one of the changes that happened to July 1st internally in our offices is a software change of the software that the cashier uses, and that's primarily for our student activity accounts. So that athletic and activity trust accounts. And bringing that into our primary financial software is part of what caused some of these changes, right? So you can see the student activity and athletic trust account line there. It's now brought in a little bit further, so that it's actually, we're processing the checks and we're processing the deposits, and all of the things are in the same ledger system, so. Dr. Frye, can you scroll to the next slide, please? So then, again, going back to trying to report these in a format that's more like a, you know, like a business would, or you would see in our bound financials, right? We'll start with a statement position, we'll go to the operational statements. Our revenue and expenditure statements are our operational statements. So then you'll see the operations, these are the same reports we've provided before. In the future, we may want to break down a little more of the revenue sources as well, so that we can explain a little clearer what we mean by local sources. And when we look at the budget document again in a second, well, a few minutes, you'll see what I mean by breaking that down. So what this statement is actually showing you, and what the expenditure statement is showing you, is for the month of July, what percent, what I'm looking at, what I'm looking at is, what percentage have we collected so far? Is it on par with what we've done previously, right? Are we behind in our collections, et cetera, that kind of thing? And then expenditures, it's the same thing. Dr. Frye, can you scroll to the expenditure sheet, please? You know, so last year, this time, we spent 9.6%. This time, we spent 9.9. Similar, right? Those are the kinds of comparisons I'm looking at, how much of the budget have we spent at this timeframe?
24, 25 budget and 24, 25 budget balance.
So the balance is what's remaining.
Got it.
Yes, so what you're seeing at the side, that's how we're getting the percentages, right? So we're looking at how much year-to-date activity. Year-to-date activity is the expenditures for July. The budget's the total budget for that, of each of those line items. Tentative, of course, because the board does not approve the final. And then that budget balance is the difference between them, right? So how much is left, how much is remaining? And that's important, because as we get closer, if any of them are gonna go significantly over budget, that's when I would be bringing a potential budget amendment to the board.
Now, the money you spent on Central.
Mm-hmm.
I was reading in some of the answers that it cashed forward into 24, 25.
We didn't pay it all out. So the, for example, the biggest piece of that is the Burgling Construction bid, right? So that bid was approved.
So he didn't bill us?
The work wasn't done. They bill on, so the way that the contractors work is, we have the bid, they did some work, then we get a bill on percentage of completion. So, and then the timing of when we pay the bills as well, right? Like, we only cut, we only issue significant board checks once a month, because the board wants to approve those payments before they go out. So the timing of all of that, that bid, I think, was approved in May.
Right. And oftentimes, when we do summer construction of any type, it's right about now that we get the final bills. And especially the projects so big, like a roofing project we did last year with the auditorium, or a project like this, because there are some things that we're reconciling, you know. Last, the past couple weeks, the construction meeting has been walking around and going through a through a punch list, right? We're either satisfied or dissatisfied. In some cases, there's, you know, who pulled down that electrical or that Wi-Fi cable? We quibble with who's gonna pay for that because sometimes, as good as a construction and demolition company will be, there's something that we think. Or, or all the way down to, we had some composite vinyl luxury tile in some classrooms. It, it's gouged, it's damaged in a way that we didn't believe, you know, it should have been protected, most rooms it was, so we, we haggle, you know, in that case with Burglum Construction, who's gonna cover, you know, replacing this? So those final costs, you know, getting very granular and not, are not reconciled. So we start getting the bill now, but we're across the June 30th timeline. We are now into the next year, so you see it on this year's budget. Mr. Thies asked a really good question, like, well, we know we're probably gonna do some continued work next summer in Central, where, where is that in the budget? Really good question. It, it's not in the budget because it's likely that once we approve that or the board approves that, we, then we decide, we have to decide a strategy for that, we, likely won't be paying anything until the next budget. That's when we'll actually be gonna make debt payments or fund transfers to pay, pay those bills, so it'll appear in the next expenditure, you know, budget, basically a report of expenditures.
Is that the same as? Us filing up with Lincoln Way?
What do you mean? So, we don't owe anything else to Lincoln Way, so is that what you're asking?
We done paid all the bills.
Yeah, and that was from last year's budget, and you amended the budget to kind of meet that, right? Because that's where we had some overages, unexpected.
So the difference between something like that is rent to Lincoln Way, we, we knew what that was upfront. We were able to pay that within the timeframe. So we paid through, we, we were there through May, they did not charge us any rent for June or July, while we had stuff there, but no people. So our last rented payments to Lincoln Way was May 1st. We paid it actually in April.
Yeah, we talked about it in one meeting about, I guess, the electric bill reconciled and that?
It came out to, we, everything was reconciled where there was nothing else owed and there's no credits. So, yeah.
Yeah, so that really, our relationship with Lincoln Way was on last year's budget. We just had to amend the budget, which you did.
Right.
Because those were expenses that weren't in the initial budget. And even though we used fund balances to pay for that, the board still has to amend the budget because it's different than what we submitted to the state.
Right, because the expenditures are what we're budgeting. Dr. Frye, will you scroll down to the capital projects fund here? So, no, same page, sorry.
Sorry, went too far.
Yep, capital projects fund. So the $4.4 million here that's budgeted tentatively for capital projects is Mr. Thies has, has asked about. That is all about Central, right? And what that's made up of is the last, like Dr. McBride was saying, the like punch list part for CCC Holdings, which was the demolition bid contractor, and then all of the contract for Burglum Construction. Because the timing of that Burglum Construction project started, the board didn't approve the contract till May 20th, so they didn't start working till after that. Not enough work was done to get a bid, a bill to us by the middle of June when we had to pay bills, so we didn't get that first one till July then. So, and then there's, the, the remaining piece of that, third piece of, that makes up that total 4.4 is DLA's share of those contracts as well, for working with them on the architect's side. So the other parts that have changed in this, if, Dr. McBride, can you scroll just a little bit more, please? Again, treasures report. So the treasures report previously, and if you, if you took out last month's treasures report, June 30th, and compared it to this month's treasures report, your ending balances last month do not match this month. And that's because we have added the other accounts to this, right? The previous treasures report was, and it, it's really a, a factor of the growth of the district, right? We had one or two main cash accounts, and they were on the treasures report. Well, since then, we now have a separate cash account that's just for payroll, and we have a separate cash account that's just for collecting parent's school fees through Infinite Campus, as the parents made their school fees that way. Then there's another one for lunch account deposits. And so really, our, our money's in a little bit different pieces. They're separate for a reason, for reconciliation purposes and tracking, but yet they really come together, like you saw in the statement position, for the total cash balance of the district. So that is a difference in this report. The investment section didn't change. It's the, the top section now has more in it, and you can see kind of a better picture of the split between cash and investments in total. Any questions on that change? Hopefully that is a clear change. Dr. McBride, can you scroll to the next page, please? So then, this is our investment report, which is the same as, as previous. We did not make any changes to that other than update for what's currently held. And one more, then we get to our cash flow report. So then here is a, a reset of the cash flow report because we're starting a new year. So what this report is showing us, and once again, is the total cash and investments of the district, which is the big tall line on the left, blue, for, for those of you can see that blue color. The green color, the middle lowest one is the cash receipts for the month, because July is not a month where we get a significant amount of tax money, so it's low. And then how much we've spent in cash dispersments for that month. Can you scroll one more page, please? Okay, so this is a little bit different. This is again, a direct result of us changing software. We needed to recreate a report for showing you which clubs and activities and sports owned some of these funds, right? So these funds are all owned by the student groups and are supposed to be used for those student groups, right? So this, this report is showing you that, what the balances were at the beginning, what some of the receipts and dispersments are, and what the ending balances. You're gonna notice that there are a few that may have negative balances here and there, and that's all due to the timing of their spending versus their collecting things, right? So with the change in moving our, these things into our system, the money is dispersed a little bit differently because of how it comes in. What we used to do is we used to run it through a liability account, and so it's, it's cleaner this way, we're not having to do that, we're not having to pass money back and forth between the district's primary account and the student activity accounts. Because really, all of it is still cash of the district, right? We still have to report these, and we're custodians of those funds for the students. So they're on our balance sheet, they're in our audit. So it, it, this is a little bit cleaner to show that all of these groups have money in these places.
Well, this is a pot of, you know, this isn't in the millions, it's about, you know, 418,000, but it shows up in your fund balances, but this is money that the, the district houses, but really technically isn't, isn't district money.
Right.
It's for each of these organizations.
Yep.
You might say, well, that's not a lot. This is actually, I would just draw the board's attention to athletic and activities because generally where some of the biggest problems in school money are, are in these type of accounts. And almost every school year, you hear someone who's done something they shouldn't have done. And so monitoring these are very important, having them public facing, very important, keeps everybody accountable who, you know, is touching this kind of in and out.
I remember when we started shortening it because there were some issues that came to the board about that.
Right. It's one of those things that is often housed in a principal's office as opposed to a district office, and so controls over those funds may not be the same as you have in the business office that processes things. So bringing this in and having our cashier work directly with the business office, our cashier is kind of a quasi-building employee and a district employee because she works with us in the district office as well as building administration. But we have, bringing it in and into the same software we use for all our other purchasing means it's gonna have the same exact controls over that, right? So we're gonna have everything in the same place, more eyes on it for reconciliation and for approval, so it, it just protects the district and those clubs.
And it might, unless the board has, you know, we'll probably pause here, questions about treasures report, might, we might pivot to that budget, just leave a lot of time because this really almost will be the last time we can get some direction from you in terms of, you know, a lot of rich questions that, that were asked today about the budget. Any questions about the treasures report, where we're at right now, just starting into a, into a new year, anything that we're reporting and the way that we're reporting that's clearer?
Yes, like, how do you determine what amount of money goes into each, like, club or athletic?
So those are not funds that we distribute to the clubs. Those are, it's all fundraising. So all the money that's in there is fundraising funds, which is why it doesn't really belong to us, you know what I mean? It's, the, the clubs, for example, Interact will raise money and then donate at places, right? Some of the sports will raise money and then they'll go on a special trip that's not a district trip. So like, they may wanna, I think maybe golf is an example, I feel like they take a trip that's out of state, and that's not a district-funded trip, but they still wanna go do this special trip, so they fundraise for it, you know, that kind of stuff.
Is there an amount of money that we do give to, like, each?
The athletic department has its own budget. So the athletic director manages what the needs are of all the different, the different clubs and their sports specifically, because the activities director also has a budget. And it's their job to kind of look at what, what each club needs and like rotate, you know, okay, this month, this time, this year, you're gonna get equipment, and the next year, you're gonna get equipment, that kind of thing. But yeah, there's a whole separate, within the district's budget, budget for athletics and budget for activities. So yeah, there are a number of things that the district pays for, and then there are things that are kind of outside of that that clubs can talk to us for.
And the, the most significant that the board contributes to clubs and act, to activities and athletics are the stipends for coaches and advisors. So basically, the, you know, the amount of pay, for lack of a better word, the, a, a coach, you know, women's wrestling, or, you know, a, a club, student government, the board pays all of those, you know, that pay to do that extra duty. So that's the biggest support that the board does towards those two.
And making sure there's uniforms and paid officials and all that kind of stuff. Good questions.
So we had a number of questions about the budget, and I thought we could maybe dive into those. You know, questions that you might have seen, you know, emailed board member questions back out, kind of a number of things that I was hoping to walk through tonight and get your, your advisement on, so just wanna open it up. You know, this is, there's one, you know, good question about what's the, what's the final form that you'll see in September? You'll actually see two forms. This form of the tentative budget is something that we believe is just easier on the public, easier on you to understand. Here are our estimated expenditures, they're broken out by the different funds. These funds are what we're required, where we're required to budget and house money for particular purposes, and that's state regulation, the, the state requires that. And then right below it are, are the different funding sources. Where do we receive revenue, you know, in terms of how all of this gets funded, this budget gets funded? Where, where, where does it come from? And then right behind this is, is a line item, you know, almost 50 pages of line items, every single thing we pay. If you go historically back to our, our district webpage, we do publish for the public because you also have to see in September, the form that we submit to the state of Illinois, to ISBE. It is, it is a, not a very user-friendly, readable-friendly, I think most people would give up two or three pages into it. It's got its own architecture and language and filling cells, so we try to provide the board and the public with something a little bit more comprehensible.
And the other, the other thing it does is it lists every possible revenue source, whether you receive it or not, so.
Right.
Just has more stuff than you need, yeah.
So what does the ISBE, they monitors a school budget?
They do, because ultimately, with our budget and our levy, and the levy goes through our county, they assign us our, our, our status. So whether that's, you know, anywhere from recognition to watch list. So they are, they are monitoring that, they're the filing agents, right? Who have that kind of, they're also taking a look, are we properly audited, as we should be? So, you know, we're the compliance folks.
I have another question. One of the reasons why I asked the question about, just to review the revenue sources for the district, is I guess I just, for my own purposes, I just wanted to have it, I guess, explained one more time, because you do a nice job every, every month. But there's not a lot of wiggle room, and you, please let me know if I'm wrong, in terms of growth of revenue? And so, from my perspective, I'm thinking that, you know, the district has very, you know, it's not like you're a corporation where you can go and just create another widget to create, you know?
Right.
A new revenue stream. So I think, so I was thinking in terms of talking with the public and just making sure that they understand that, you know, when the district gets money, it's not necessarily that they're holding on to it because they don't want to spend it, they're holding on to it because they've gotta be conservative because they only get what they get, right? And so the, the opportunity to grow that is pretty limited. So I just wanted, for my own purposes, just to, to review those revenue sources and then kind of see what, I guess, over, over time, and maybe five, 10 years, or just off the top of your head, what'd be a good comparison, what percentage of growth does that really happen? Because I would think the biggest variable would be the property taxes, right?
Property taxes is that?
Yeah, that is, you know, and if you look right above, it was here, and it was here, and Michael, maybe if you just kind of like, just go to your right and your left, just a little respectively. So you have a list, and the, the levy is by far, and that's really the way that, that revenue source is the way that the state of Illinois has set up funding of public schools through property taxes. There is a limit on that, which is the property tax extension limitation law. It's limited by the Consumer Price Index, which historically has been very low, last year was high, but it's gonna be back to 3%. So it puts a, a limit on what we can levy, but by far, you know, that brings in the most amount of, of revenue.
Right.
So that, and we can go through, Candace explained every single one of, you know, just each, what, really quickly, what are those, you know, what are those, those different things? You know, corporate personal property replacement tax, those are taxes really from corporate partners. You know, through, that's separate, that's something like the negotiations we're doing with Sitco, which is long-term, I don't know if you wanna make him mention anything. Stephanie about corporate, you know, personal property replacement tax.
Yeah, no, I mean, you said what it is, that's.
Yeah.
And it actually is decreasing, so.
Right. Evidence-based funding, we're, based on what we're considering here, that is what the state, that's the total state, you might have heard, the state budgeted $350 million for evidence-based funding. That's our piece, 3.7 is, is our piece of state funding. Historically, I've kind of shared with the board, in 1993, there was a reformulation, much like evidence-based funding was a reformulation a number of years ago, that high school districts dramatically had a reduction in what they received from the state. So one trend you'll see is you'll see a lot of conservative work because people remember that, and when that sort of changed, you know, the message to high school districts were, hey, really, you know, can't rely on that. So you'll probably see 3.7 is not that much.
Can you remind us again what that's based off of? What makes a high tier and what makes a low tier?
It's basically, evidence-based funding is every year we do a report, it's primarily an E, what's called EIS report. We report everything about our students, everything about our staff, and the state comes up with, it tiers you by what it perceives your need is. So what, what is your need? Where, where would we put you in term, in terms of needs? So our need is, we're not the most needyest, we're not the least needyest either, right? So based on that, that's the evidence we've supplied for our needs. We get funded along that evidence that we've shown. What, what do we need to do? We also get what's called an adequacy rate. Last time I checked, our adequacy rate was?
Eighty-three point six.
Yeah, I was gonna say eighty-five, let's.
I have it in front of me.
So what that means, I believe that that's a measure of efficiency. So the state says, you need this to be at 100% to satisfy every need, everything you've got in this district. The board is funding 85% of that. So to me, that shows that we're, we're fairly lean, we're below our adequacy rate. The state says we should be spending more, we're spending 50% less than what the state says we should be spending.
And an example of, Candace, you were talking about growth, like that, the, how the growth of that. So over the time of evidence-based funding, we're, that percentage that Dr. McBride and I were just talking about makes us a tier-two district. And so what that means is we get a tiny little bit of that, of those funds that the state is putting into that, right? We've received about $100,000 every year, except for one of the COVID years, additional. So that 3.7 actually is gonna go up, that was the tentative. So that three point seven actually is gonna go up, that was the tentative number. Now I know it, we're gonna get three, eight, nine, eight, one, one, zero. So we're gonna get about three point nine. Um, and the increase from those two, it's three point seven percent. So it's, it's about three to four percent at most, um, depending on how much we got, cause sometimes it's only a hundred and three, sometimes it's a hundred and thirty-seven, so, um, it depends on how much they fund it and then what percentage we are compared to these other districts. So that's an example of how that's restricted, right? It doesn't grow very much because of the tier we're in, um, and we don't have any control over that, right? We get what we get, um, which is why tentatively I usually budget that it's not gonna go up at all. And then when it does, we have an extra hundred thousand dollars to figure out what we're gonna do with it.
Right, and I think, um, cause I was just thinking of some prior board meetings that I had participated in, how to kind of communicate that later on, when it comes time to talk to the public about that? Because, you know, one of the things that I've learned is, is, you know, um, for lack of a better term, the boundaries that a district has in order to maneuver. So, you know, especially in the, in the camp of revenue. And so I think sometimes, um, it might be helpful to remind others just how sometimes it feels, in my limited experience, it feels like sometimes your hands are kind of tied in terms of your revenue. And so when, so when I hear that, um, the words conservative in terms of finances, for me, that's, I take that as a positive, because you're not spending like there's no tomorrow and you're being very thoughtful and pragmatic about how you're applying your expenses against your, your revenues. Cause your opportunity to grow that is very limited.
And this is really big, this is part of a bigger question that's kinda, you know, looming on, on the horizon. A number of you ask about, you know, the, the, sort of the, the, the future of commitments, et cetera. You have a resolution that authorized twenty-six point two million dollars in life safety bonds. We're doing the preparation for that right now. We've submitted our list to the state. That, whatever is on there is approved, we'd obviously bring that back to you to say, here's what's approved. We, we would like to next summer, brand new roof, absolutely needs to be done, electrical supply, then the total envelope of the building in terms of masonry, uh, doing everything that needs to be done. And those, those three at, at minimum as summer projects. So the board will have to make, you know, not only an approval of that, of we agree, but also a strategy to fund that. Is that we'll, we'll continue using fund balances, we'll activate those life safety bonds. I think that was the intent of your resolution. And you don't have to activate all of that debt at once, and you don't have to have all of your debt have the same term of maturity either. You can say, we're gonna do a twenty-year here, thirty-year there, you know, you can, you can vary that, uh, which is, which is very, very typical, um, just to, just to manage, manage those, those payments. So that, that, that is on the horizon. So the bigger question is, you know, in your resolution, you allocated ten to twelve million in fund balances, really with the intent of doing construction underneath the main gym for the Lockport Academy and the CCC. So we'll also, in a few short weeks, have to start talking about moving forward with that, right? And one thing we'd have to go back with Stephanie and I is, if there's anything you want on the table, you know, as, as Mr. Tease noted, that, that's not in the budget right now, you know? Um, we, we don't have the Lockport Academy and the CCC, we have some conversations we're having with some other, um, other groups, the facilities master planning, the, um, uncensored group, and we wanna honor those, right? We don't wanna get ahead of those, right? But also, if we have to make a change, you know, in the budget, you know, we need direction on that by, by September, if that's going to be, you know, you, you know, if you're gonna diverge from your resolution and even increase your, your use of fund balances, right? So that question is kinda always hanging over us right now, about how much do you use in fund balances? We're operating under the assumption, May twentieth resolution is what you've set, right? So now, like tonight would be, if you've, you've got a different opinion, you wanted more conservative, less than ten million, more aggressive, greater than twen- twelve million, you know, that's kinda thing we'd have to hear from you tonight. Otherwise, we're just gonna follow that, that resolution. The other, yeah, just really quickly, sorry, Stephanie, everything else really is up, is school fees that we collect, interest income, and then those state and federal grants are grants that we can't qualify. Those are really reimbursement grants. We, we, we spend money on things that are qualified by the grant, and then the state or the federal government pays us back.
And our, our largest grants are our special education grant for IDEA.
Right.
And that's one of our largest, so, and title grants are the others for low income and that risks students, so. Um, all of those are, like, like we talked about, the, the property taxes are restricted, right? We have the CPI limitation, um, or five percent, whichever's greater. Um, we talked about evidence-based funding being restricted. Um, and then there are things like, Dr. McBride talked about corporate personal property replacement tax, and that actually is quite variable. Um, the last couple of years, it's gone down significantly. So, um, you know, this year's budgeted amount overall is one point three million for that, but last year it was, we received almost two million. So that six hundred thousand that I, we needed to figure out what we, else, where we're gonna fund that piece, because it helped last year's budget, so. Um, that one's a little less predictable, um, which makes it a little harder to, to predict and budget, but, um. The other things that are not in this, Dr. McBride talked about, other big capital projects are not in this tentative budget. Um, the, a potential debt service abatement is not in there as well. So if the board would like to see that in this budget, I can put it in there, or we can amend the budget after the board decides in December whether they, they wanna approve that. Um, like we did this, this previous year. So what that is, is to remind everyone that, um, our debt service payments, um, to our bonds are being paid by a levy that was approved way back when those bonds were approved, um, in order, and it's scheduled out to, to pay each of those payments, right? So the next payment, which would be funded from the next tax levy, um, the, the amount levy to pay for those next debt service payments could be abated back to taxpayers, basically rebating, reducing the, the portion of the tax. Discounting, that's the word Dr. McBride has used, yes. Um, the, the taxpayer's bill, right? They, they basically don't have that number in that, um, on their bill. Um, trying to think of other things that are not in there.
And if we maybe just pause on that, because that is one piece where we could really use your input this evening. And I, you know, there was some, there was board member question, folks asked that, um, you know, really it would be good to know where you're at. Like Stephanie said, there's two strategies, we could put in the budget now, and you could look at what the impact of a debt service abatement would be in September. You can say, we, we need to think about that a little bit more. Again, we need more time, we do it in December, and then we amend the budget, we just file an amendment. Um, you know, there's a couple thoughts there on it, on a, on a debt service abatement, you know? One thought, oh, continue on with the debt service abatement, is that you have low debt. So the payment right now is low. So if you use fund balance and say, wait a minute, we're not gonna do that debt service levy, we'll just use our fund balance and, and pay that off instead of having taxpayers do that. Uh, low debt, not a lot of fund balances that are used, you know? The, the discount is about forty to fifty dollars per taxpayer, right? So it, so it is some, some relief. It's, I call it a discount, because it's not, you know, you cleaved it in half, right? And you're certainly not, you know, you're not sending checks out, out, out to people. So you're in a good position to do it. You do provide some taxpayer relief, even though, you know, it's modest, right?
It's a dinner.
What?
It's a dinner.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's something. And, um, you know, right now you have, you have low debt, and, but, you know, you've already made a commitment to using fund balances. More on the con side is you are planning on taking on new debt. So you're planning with, you know, life safety bonds to take on new debt. So you'll, you'll increase your debt payments coming up. You're already using fund balances, do you want to add another million in, you know? Your twelve million upper limit goes to now thirteen million, right? Sometimes, uh, you don't get very much love or credit for a debt service abatement, because people tend not to notice it, right? It, you know, it just doesn't seem, you know, when you get your tax bill, it, it, it doesn't seem to, to, you know, get that much play, uh, get that much notice. So there's, there's, there's pros and cons with it, right? But maybe it'd be good just to hear where your minds are in, in our preparation, you know, where, where you're at with continuing on debt service payment.
I'd like to see how it would impact the budget.
Yes.
And how far off are we from paying the, the debt that we have?
Thirty-one or something, no, twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-one or something. I'd have to pull up the, um, debt service.
So on the specific debt?
Right, on the two bond issues that we have.
Few more years.
Yeah, so the, the bond issues that we currently have, um, two seconds, I can get them up.
I don't know how anybody else feels, but I'd like to see how it would impact the budget.
So, I mean, I mean, I can kinda tell you that, um, the bond payments for twenty-twenty-five, um, interest and principal are, um, one point three million dollars, one, three, three, nine, six hundred. So what that means is, half of that would be impacting this budget, and half of that would be impacting the following budget.
And how much is the interest in that?
Um, so the interest payment that's due in the next, this year is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The principal that's being reduced is one point one.
Extracting that over to twenty-thirty-one, do we, how much the total crude interest would be?
So, I mean, the, the rest of the payment scheduled is what you're asking?
It's like, you know, let's, let's say we make a decision to abate that amount, and it's saving a certain amount of interest.
Eh, it's really not. What this is doing is just giving the tax payment back to the district. This isn't affecting the debt structure, um, so it doesn't, it's not, um, uh, refunding or, um, uh, refinancing the debt. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about, which we have done in the past to save interest. Um, but what we're talking about here is just not having the taxpayers pay for it, having a current taxpayer pay for it, having us pay for it on fund balances instead. So it wouldn't really be saving interest at this point. Um, and there's not enough left to refinance. Um, twenty-thirty-one is fiscal year, twenty-thirty-one would be the final payments on, that's the final payment on the twenty-nineteen bonds, I believe. Um, the twenty-seventeen bonds will be done in twenty-twenty-seven. So in twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-seven to twenty-eight, we'll be dropping down to one bond issue outstanding, unless we issue more.
Right.
My opinion is we should do the rebate, cause we told the public that's what we were gonna do. You know, while we can.
And not only would we be careful not to call it a rebate, cause that's an entirely different process.
An abatement.
But an abatement, sorry, to be, not in lingo. But people do, they hear rebate and they think, oh, we're doing a rebate, right?
Send out checks, yeah.
Right, and we could, Luanne, I know Candace, you have a question too, and I think I heard from, uh, um, from Veronica, I think what you were saying was, you, you'd like to, like, we certainly could, next month, bring you, this is what the budget looks like with a debt service abatement in it, this is what the budget looks like without it. And then September ninth, there's a finance and facility committee meeting. You would workshop that, right? You'd really set that side by side, try to exit that saying, well, this would be, you know, our recommendations to our colleagues, go with the debt service abatement, not debt service abatement, wait and see, maybe amend it. You have a, you have a lot of strategies, right? But I think what you're saying, Luanne, is we kinda started talking about this last year, and there was at least an intent with low debt payments to continue this as long as our debt payments remain low, right? It's harder to do if you take on new debt and that payment really increases, right? Cause you're just using more fund balances to do that abatement.
So doing the abatement is, would be seen as, um, a good faith effort back to the community on behalf of the district. So as, which is a, a nice benefit. In terms of other benefits, does that benefit the district and, and or the school by any other agencies or not so much?
No, not, not really, right? It, um, you know, it's, it's aligned to your thoughts about, hey, look, we're, we're gonna use fund balances, right? It's not a huge expenditure, one point three million dollars is not a huge, you know, expenditure of fund balances. And you've already said ten to twelve million dollars, so it's not significantly increasing that fund balance commitment, at least at this point right now. So it's certainly, I would say, doable, and maybe the calculation that you would have as a board is, you know, does this, is this kinda the right path right now, right, um, for, for where we're at?
So, Dr. McBride, if you, can you, um, zoom back out so that we can see the totals on this? So, um, we can kinda see them, they're small.
Yeah, we're, we're, I, I didn't hear what you.
So.
Zoom out.
Yeah, no, this is, this is good, cause what I was trying to see is, um.
Do you wanna go down here and write in?
You know, if we were gonna do, it's about one point three, one point four, so it's seven hundred thousand dollars, let's say. So the impact on that, right now we're showing a two point three kind of reduction in fund balance, right? And that's directly due to the construction projects, um, or project, et cetera. Um, that would go to more like three million. That's, that's how that would impact the bottom line. It would probably be coming from the, um, education fund, because that's, you know, the, the largest fund.
And, and what I think I'm hearing, just kinda seeing the body language, and this isn't anything you need to vote, this is just giving us direction on some things you'd like to see. September ninth, financing facilities, and you'd like to see, you know, next month is, sounds like you'd, you'd like to see that comparison.
Mm-hmm.
There's debt service abatement, here's no debt service abatement. So you have kind of a basis of comparison for, for the two, right?
Yes.
And like I said, we're gonna, Stephanie and I are gonna continue down that line that, you know, one, ten to twelve billion in fund balances, your intention in the resolution is that we should be looking at the timing, whenever that start is of that work on the Lockport Academy and the CCC. And then also hanging out there are those life safety bonds, which we'll just, we'll, we'll wait till we see, you know, how we plan on scheduling that out, what you approve, and then, you know, using that life safety debt to, to meet that cost, right? But that's very much our, that, the debt is very much our rise to that.
So what would, what I would normally be doing right now, and what, what I, what I am doing, especially now that we've just, um, issued the payroll for the first, um, contracts of the school year, right? That was last Friday, was the first big payroll for the, um, majority of our staff, their new contracts. And, um, what I normally would do now is I would take that total costs and, and kind of, you know, test it out. Did, is this tentative budget salaries and benefits numbers, do they match what we actually finally ended up at? Because while I did the tentative numbers, we were still hiring, right? Um, and because of that, you know, there may have been some people, you know, I may have had a salary in for one employee and then it had to change. Or, um, you know, was it somebody who was more expensive or less expensive, whatever the case may be. Um, so I, I, I will compare that out and see if this needs to be adjusted. So you may see other adjustments like that, right? Um, I know we received more money in one of our grants, um, in the CTE, the, um, um, s, to the computer tech ed area. We received more allotment than, than we expected.
Than we expected.
So what I put in here, there's gonna be more, but then there's an offsetting expenditure. Those types of things are the fine, the final, like, adjustments I'd be making to these. So then come September, you'll see a comparison chart. Um, you know, all the pages behind this list the tentative budget numbers, you'll see a comparison between that, changes, and the final. You know what I'm saying? So, um, any changes that will be made, I'm tracking them so that you'll be able to see, um, what the difference is.
You know, we got, you know, other parts you generated in close session, but there were also lots of boards that had a question about salaries. I don't know if there's any questions. You know, tried to answer your question this afternoon about salaries, kinda going back in the, in, in, back to kinda March to June, we did some, some graphs to show our, uh, in, you know, increase in salaries, increase in total spending versus other districts. And we have really, for the most part, remained flat. Yes, we, we hired more staff, three more positions, for example, licensed staff, one new assistant principal. But really the increase, the total increase in, in payroll has, has been minimal. And we just manage that through how we hire and who retires. You know, so we try to keep that, um, without sharp increases or sharp decreases, uh, you know, over time. But I, I don't know if there's any questions about salaries. The reason why I ask is because salaries by far, you know, takes up the largest portion of this budget, you know, right now, it dwarfs anything else.
We're in a service industry, so that's the largest piece of the budget.
Right, I was just gonna offer that, you know, in the inflationary period and given other union negotiations that I've been a part of and, um, in other areas that I've certainly heard about, to have, um, what appears to be at least now, roughly a two and a half percent increase, um, is just such a testament to not only the relationship with the union, but also the strategy that the administration and you take to basically hire and balance all of these staff, while still responding to federal and state requirements that oftentimes are adding requirements on top of us that we can't really refu- That we can't really refuse. And they, and they require most often hiring staff to, to respond to that. And so, you know, you hear about so many other organizations that have. Costs that are increasing four, five, six, seven percent annually. And some of the other unions around here and just the relationship that the administration has built with the union here has been. Just really good, not only that we have a retention that we do. And so people feel like they have a good relationship with the administration and they like where they work and they like the culture that's been built. We just don't see that in other places. And to still be able to maintain a relatively flat expenditure on employees is just, it's really wonderful.
It's probably the main thing we do to sort of navigate our finances. And even though it seems like we have a season, you know, you hire in the spring first. It's actually, Dr. Green, you can get a test, it is just always going on because we have so many different types of employees. All right, I think we have some pretty good direction. I hope we answered your questions tonight about where we're going with this particular budget.
I just wanted to point out one other thing. It's, you know, when you look at the numbers, I mean. The last year's budget to actual, I mean, it's a reduction of roughly two and a half percent two on the scale of. Plus or minus two million dollars. And that's another testament to the administration, everybody that handles money within the district, that they are respectful of it. That they don't overspend, that they look for areas that, you know, they can either cut or have. More value add to students and their colleagues. And overall, at least for comparison to last year's budgeted amount and this year's budgeted amount. You know, granted, there would be some modifications, but a three percent reduction in the overall cost. And that includes all of the supplies and everything else that we buy that are suffering from inflation numbers of. Three, four, five, six, seven percent, not to mention the accrued inflation over the last two to three years. To be able to absorb that and still maintain a flat or reduced total budget is just a testament to. The way that we work conservatively and the way that we budget conservatively and the way that we spend conservatively. So, I mean, kudos to really everybody in the room that handles all of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the July twenty twenty fourth treasurer's report?
Someone?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez, Pennyboy?
Yes. Okay. Superintendent update?
All right, very briefly, I am not gonna steal the thunder of my principal colleagues. But I thought we had a great start and you've heard it here. You know, probably the most miraculous thing just, you know, what Avery said really hit the nail on the head at every stage. There was just so many final loose ends to pull together. And really, our custodian maintenance and grounds just did a fabulous job, you know, even just at the ceremony last week, the firm, the school looked great. Right? And so it's a, it, it, it's really an amazing testament. And just the feeling of the tone that Jacqueline and Carrie set with their staffs, their meetings at the beginning of the year. You know, it's really kind of put people in the right place. We know in education, we start out strong, we start out positively. And then all of us maybe in a couple of weeks, you know, about four weeks, we're all like, wow, are we tired? Was there ever an August, good gravy? You know, but I will assure you, people are more fatigued, a lot more tired, if they don't have that positive humanistic start to school. And certainly that was felt and, and really an excellent start, so there's, there's thanks all over. I don't want to leave anybody out, but really an outstanding job. Speaking about an outstanding job, let's just give it up for our webmaster and videographer who is spending his birthday. With us at the board meeting, Mr. Slager. Mr. Slager is, nothing says happy birthday like, like, like a school board meeting. Some of you have done this.
Want to step into the camera frame?
Yes. I think you know enough about, you know, the conclusion of operations at Central, really miraculous. I was walking down hallways today in the north side of the building with Mrs. Garrettson. Those are all hallways that we weren't even supposed to be walking down today. Other areas that weren't even supposed to be in the shape that they're in now, they're in great shape.
That's great.
Will there be a, a video created showing some of the in-progress?
Yeah, like the, the timeline. Yeah, we're, we're trying to, we've taken so much footage that we're trying to think how we can, you know, we can really do that. But it's a great idea, right, just how, how the thing actually happened.
What was the timeline again for everything to be completely finished?
Well, everything was supposed to be completely finished after Labor Day. But right after Labor Day, all major operations are done. So kudos to Burgling Construction, you know, it's just very nerve wracking to commit to some of the, the additional things that we did, some of the change orders we did. Ran the risk of really kicking back, you know, the opening of certain sections.
And just as a reminder, that's a twenty percent reduction in time.
Right. Huge. It's, it's incredible, right? So. That's kind of getting into the four different semi tractor trailer lifts from Lincoln Way North, which was, is a whole other piece. Of unloading that, professional movers organizing that rooms, making sure it was in the right place. Uh, finally, I'll just mention, I put a report in about facility master planning that is continuing on. We met a week ago tonight. We're in this phase where we're really trying to build the knowledge of that group, make sure everybody in that group before we get into doing focus groups with the community. Before we get into doing recommendations to the board, that we really understand some core things about the district. Why do we have a freshman center? Why is board committed to college and career readiness? Last week was Mrs. Crowe on full display, we just peeled out everything, much of what you saw tonight. Let's all make sure we understand how finances work. Probably have one more meeting like that on September twenty third, where we're really gonna take a look at athletics. Because that is, those are facilities that are so different than anything else. And then the needs of special education, which require very specialized facilities as, as well. Great participation, great attendance. So, you know, a number of you are in that, at those meetings, so I'm very pleased that we're at. That's my report.
Okay, curriculum report.
Hi, I will just come up in case you have any questions. Just a reminder, next month I will share with you about the summer curriculum work our teachers did, that you graciously approved that budget item. And so you know that teachers are working that way in the summer, but I want to share with you these other two ways that teachers worked in the summer, and that's going through conferences. You know, again, I thank the board for approving our three AP advisors and they, yeah, two of them went to this conference and just came back with a whole host of good ideas. Are any of you on AP advisory? I'm just wondering. Are any of you AP metric? Okay. AP advocates? Yes, yes. So, you know, they come back and Kelly Featherling's working with students on what are different ways that our upperclassmen can support newer students. Whole ideas about how to celebrate teachers who take time to do this work, both in the AP classroom and the dual credit classroom. So that our students can achieve that board goal one. And then also, you know, teachers, I went with teachers to an assessment conference. That's where we talk about all the different ways that we can help monitor how students are doing. And really, I think one of the greatest takeaways from this conference was how can students do a better job at realizing their role in learning, right? It's about having students know, here's where I'm at, this is where I need to go, and here's how I'm gonna get there. And then work in conjunction with their teachers to achieve what they need to in the classroom. So I'll just pause there because I could talk about either one of these things for a long time, but I know you've been here for a little bit. Any questions?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but because of the advanced placement rate, our AP participation rate has really increased, right?
We've increased. And actually, I, at the curriculum committee meeting in September, our AP coordinators are gonna come and they're gonna talk about how our students have done overall. Some of our new programming as well. So they'll share all those metrics. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, principal reports.
I do have to say, this is the first time I've been walking up here in a long time where I'm the taller one.
Wow.
No, I am.
Right?
But I, I want to start this off by welcoming Dr. Jacqueline Johnson to the table. You know, we have developed a great relationship already. She is so wonderful to be around. She brings so much energy and excitement to this position, so I am grateful to be sitting here at the table with her. Really wanted to talk about our first day of school. The two of us, actually, before we came up here, Dr. McBride, I don't know, August, the first day, we're exhausted.
Like we're so tired right now.
Neither one of us really got a good night's sleep.
No.
Just anticipating the excitement.
Yes.
And making sure that everything went smoothly this morning. And I'm happy to report at Central, we had a great first day. And I really want to thank our staff. The kids didn't know any different, but a week ago, that building was still full of boxes and things were everywhere. And the staff came in last Wednesday, put in extra time, spent so much time on Friday. And then this weekend, I had a lot of staff members come in. And just to make sure that everything looked great as the class of twenty eight arrived this morning. And a special thank you, I have to say it again, you know, many people have stated, Bill Thompson and his staff, both maintenance and custodial. They were bound and determined to get us back in that building and to have it look exceptional on day one. And they really did that, working around the clock, working weekends. Bill Thompson and Anthony and Dave Kane, they were there this weekend, making sure that everything was ready to go on Monday. So I can't thank them enough. And we kicked off today with a first day assembly. As you know, this was the first year that we could not bring the freshmen in for orientation and allow them, besides the COVID year. But allow them the opportunity to go find their classrooms and be able to open up their locker. So I have talked to many parents about the angst that a lot of kids had walking into that building. And so today, we did the assembly. It was all about helping them feel comfortable, transitioning into the building, knowing the building, and making sure that they felt welcome, that, that sense of belonging. So we really talked about the building. Everyone had a map, either on their phone or a hard copy with the rooms highlighted. Our staff really just focused on the building and relationship building today. And that's really, and so to see the smiles, and actually, I said, didn't you feel like we had eight hundred and sixty kids in the building? Because they were moving. And the teachers did a phenomenal job of helping them understand the building and get to the classrooms that they needed. During homerooms, we did have them out in the locker. I think I've opened more lockers today than I have in a really long time. But I would say that it was a great success and I just want to say that we are grateful to be back home at Central.
I have to say thank you to Carrie, just from welcoming me to being in this leadership role and being a team member. You know, it was interesting, we talked a couple of times today and it was like, how are you doing? How are you doing? Is everything okay? Yes, yes, it is. And so it was nice, just to, I, it's nice to have a partner to just bounce all of the, the excitement, you know, off of each other. Because we didn't sleep pretty much last night. I think we both were like, okay, we're excited. It's like the first day of school for us too. I will say, you know, at East Campus, my team is amazing. The APs and Mr. Dwyer have done such a wonderful job of supporting our staff. We had a fun kickoff to our institute day last Friday. We played a lot of our favorite tunes for the staff and we, and it was, guess that tune, just to get them. Connected to who we are as their leaders and, and people who support them. Today, the students were amazing. They were excited to be here. We saw a lot of kids hugging and high fiving. I will say that I realized, I need to be wearing my glasses a little bit more. We had, I had a, a map of the school. And every time I held this map, someone else, like, just passed me, a kid would come up, I'd be like, oh, honey, I don't really know where you're supposed to go either. I'm learning the building as well, and so it was kind of funny. So then later in the day, my assistant Anne made me a real map where I could see it for real. So that I can help more kids tomorrow. And E means East Campus, not there is an E hallway, so. That was pretty funny today too. I will have to say also, you know, transitioning to this role, we have Jeanette Castillo. And we have Pat Dean, who, they've had such an amazing communication plan, getting out the word to, you know, the parents about welcome back days. Shout out to them because we've had the most compliant families, the, in, so, you know, for a long time now. So we just are really thankful for them, you know, for their support to us. And again, I do have to amplify, our custodial staff did an amazing job helping to not only get Central. You know, put back together, but also they made sure that this school looks just as amazing. I don't know how they do it. So again, it's been a wonderful start to the year. We have our welcome back, you know, student meetings tomorrow with our, you know, ten through twelve graders. And so I'm excited to talk to them in person, meet with them. They received, you know, our welcome back video this weekend and they watched it today, first period. So, you know, it's been a really awesome start. I can't believe day one is, my first day one is.
Books.
It's in the books. So I'm, you know, just again, you know, thank you all to the board as well, just for being so supportive as we start the school year.
And to our, our birthday boy in the back of the room.
Yes.
For all of his great publications that him and Jeanette work on, but just for making it look so classy and professional, to represent who we are as boarders. So happy birthday and thank you.
Yes, happy birthday and thank you, and for not giggling at me when we have to do multiple takes. Thank you.
Thank you, we're looking, looking forward to this school year.
Yes. You are beautiful.
Yeah.
Did you ride school buses today?
I did not today, but I will this week. No school buses today, but you know, usually I'll do some riding later in the week, yeah, for sure. It's great.
They, they laugh.
And, and you know, this year, we've had student, student, student board member bus riding as well. You guys think you're so cool and beyond that.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we just have one overnight field trip.
Yep, just, just making aware of this field trip. I always just want to have that in there, August twenty third, twenty fourth, girls tennis. They'll be staying up at Alcockwood.
And then we have the maintenance report there.
Yeah, just a little bit. You know, incredible, you know, just, you know, this is a testament of Mr. Thompson to really everything that you've heard already with Burgling Construction. It's really contained in here, including the moving, the, the notes on the, the moving. But also, you know, other things go on. You know, we're, we're treating our soccer field, which is a grass soccer field with some. We're, we're seeing some fungus out there on that turf that can wreck turf, require sod replacement. We hope that doesn't happen in, in the season, those kind of lights, you know, occur. Interior walls, you know, new air foam for the CWC, card access for science storage rooms. So despite all the things that are going on in someplace like Central, still lots of grounds jobs, interior jobs that just still have to get done.
Now, is that artificial turf or is that?
That's grass.
It's grass?
Yeah, it's actual, actual grass. Our, our soccer programs prefer, many do, playing on actual grass. Strange enough, actual grass for soccer creates fewer injuries too. Fewer torn ACLs. That is the maintenance report.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items number two to number seven?
Someone?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Any questions? Roll call.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the disposal of the scrap of a nineteen ninety seven Dodge B two fifty pickup truck?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Any questions on that? All right, roll call. All right, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the filing of an assessment complaint with the Will County Board of Review?
So move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Thies?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Epstein.
Lopez?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve press 114 policy updates as presented?
So move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Thies. Are there any questions?
Lopez, can I?
Are you, are you?
I don't have so much a question.
Sure.
Just one thing I embedded there that I think is very important, and I just don't want us to kind of fly over it, is, in this policy pack, it was press policy 4.20, and that is fund balances. And it didn't require a vote, because it was only a change of legal references and footnote, so that doesn't require for you to vote. We're not recommending that you make any changes to the policy. The current policy really says that you keep a minimum of five months of cash on hand. Where your will gets expressed with fund balances is in your board goal. Right now, on our website, if you go, you'll see that the board goal is six to 12 months of cash on hand. We've been steadily, we've had a conversation here about tightening that up more to reflect perhaps eight to nine months of cash on hand, your intent to use some fund balances. So what I recommend is you, you keep the policy as is, you have a minimum, that gets you to the status, you know, with the state board, but that we come back to you with a revision, we're all in the process of working on administrator goals with a revision to your, to your board policy that reflects your true intent, where you're at with fund balances. Tightening that up to eight to nine months is kind of where we're looking at. Just wanted to footnote that. Have it in practice, not so much in policy. Because once it's a policy, then you, you have to do it, right? You know, if you said we're going to change it to eight to nine months, then, then you have to do it, right? Five is a minimum, not a maximum.
All right, it's already been motioned, second, it's roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Epstein.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to enter into closed session for the purposes of litigation when an action against affecting or or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be reported and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting under chapter 5 of the ILCS 120/2C11, and collective, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under chapter 5 of the ILCS 120/2C2.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.